Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 13th, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Leah, why don't you start us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. So we're going to start with citizens' input. You gonna say a little something, Mr. Heidecker? A little something? Because I know you and Bill already talked a little bit about...
Well, we were supposed to get together, I guess, at one point.
We probably should have, but that's... We have talked.
I mean, you're certainly welcome to speak on citizens' input, but from my understanding, though, you had a contact person to discuss a lot of your issues with?
Yeah. You know, I don't think you ever got back to me with your... I got a person I wanted to introduce you to, like, maybe help you with some of your questions.
Specifically at that board, correct?
Yeah, at the state.
The state?
If I could just make a brief intro to explain what this is about, then we can...
Well, you can, because it's under citizens' input, but I wanted you to know that after our last meeting, Bill and I talked, we spoke to someone up at the state level, and they're willing to talk to you about all your issues.
I haven't heard it there.
Well, Bill, Bill talked to you two weeks ago.
Yeah, I reached out to you twice, so you didn't call me back, so...
My wife?
I'm sorry. I know, I called you twice, but you didn't call me back, so...
It's not my wife, but that's okay.
No, I didn't say that, but...
So if you want a couple of minutes, that's fine, but we have an avenue for you to pursue.
If I could give just a brief intro, I would appreciate it, that we can talk, see what we can get, get back to you, and whoever...
Brief intro, go ahead.
Okay, for those that don't know me, I'm Dick Heidecker. I probably should have left town 30 years ago, but that's something else to consider. But I won't take it much. What I'm here for is I started picking up information on the rural school... You'll excuse me, my lung is a little messed up. And I started finding broad areas of concern that should be followed through. Primarily, the issue is the protocols that are called for. We need signatures, we need votes, we need all kinds of directives in a single area. You know, we just can't have them all over town, we have to have them in a single area. When I asked for copies, and this is also Bob Cutler's area, copies were not forthcoming. Not that they, quote, "didn't exist," but the quote, they give it back to me as "they don't exist." And the question is, we expect to have votes and protocols and what have you, and we don't get them. What should happen at that point? That's the primary thing. The secondary is the monetary, which can be blamed on the first part. That I would really enjoy working with Bill on. But anyway, that's the gist of the argument, and...
So what's important now is to make sure tomorrow follow up with Bill, because he does have an avenue for you to go to.
I will call him. I'll wake him up if he lets me. I'll give a call.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
I thank you, though.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dick.
Thanks, Dick.
All right, anybody else for citizens' input? Okay. Bill, COVID-19 update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this morning, actually, at noon time today, the governor spoke and updated everyone on what's been happening statewide, and things are starting to tick up a little bit. And so he's concerned, but he's still maintaining his position at Phase Three, Step Two. So there's been no push, there's been no rollback of that position at this point. And so we are here in Foxborough, I can tell you that we are still at about, we've got about 13 cases right now. We are in a Phase Yellow, which is, you know, not a bad position, but it's not the best position, obviously. So we've been as low as four, now we're at 13, but that number 13 has held steady for several days now. So I don't see that as really making any significant change beyond that. We've had a total of 175 people test positive. What's most impressive, though, is the fact that we've conducted almost 15,000 COVID tests in this town. And some of that, of course, relates to the fact that we have in the Gillette Stadium, and we have a lot, a number of players that get tested on a daily basis, sometimes two, three times, or three, four times a day, sometimes. So we see that number runs up, it seems artificially high, but it's still, we are performing those tests on a regular basis.
Quick question on that.
Sure.
Do those 13 cases include anybody at the country?
Actually, it does.
Just going to ask that.
Yeah, it does reflect a couple of players, so those numbers are actually getting incorporated into our numbers because it is local, because they go back to the location where they're tested, and it's...
So it's the location where they're tested, not where they live?
Apparently, well, where they... I believe that's the case. I believe that's the case. I'll confirm that, but I believe that's the case.
When you say "location," you mean because it's specifically at the stadium?
Yeah, they were tested there. They were tested at the stadium, yeah.
So is there a way for us to, just maybe the next update, for us to have a general idea of our population, roughly how many people have been tested?
Yeah, this, well, as far as our residents being tested, yeah, that, we can try and also get that broken down.
I mean, not an exact number, just, you know, I mean, obviously, like you said, that's, you know, there being, some of them are being tested on a daily basis, you've got 50, 60 staff, whatever, maybe as much, many as 100 people. That could be 700, 800 tests in a week.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, just to have a general idea, not an exact number, just where we are.
Yeah, I'll even, it's probably good, a good idea is maybe have Tom Kempson come in and give us an update on what's happening on that, so you can have, he'll talk a little bit more about where things are progressing. Also, to give you an indication of what's going to be happening with testing and their ability to do tests here, and also to administer vaccinations, things of that nature, what they're doing to ramp up and get ready for that. So probably a good time to bring him in, so he can ask him any question he wants at that point.
Christine is listening in, let's put that on next to Jenna, see if we can get Deputy Chief in.
So on a statewide level, there's 134 cases that have occurred, confirmed cases in 134 to 77. 9,350 deaths have been confirmed. So we are at a 7% fatality rate statewide. And so that's obviously a concern, but in Foxborough, we've only had one. So that's also a very good number for us, and never a good number at all, but certainly a much better number than a lot of places around the Commonwealth. So that is the latest update. There has been, there'll be, I had some further information I wanted to share with you about Halloween, because that question has come up from several, the recommendation is not to cancel Halloween at this point, because there are other alternative things that we can do. And I think if, it can be done safely, and I think, well, we'll talk about that a little later on in tonight's program, tonight, agenda tonight. But I think that's an important aspect of what people have been asking, you know, what's going to happen with Halloween. Right now, it is on. And the Board of Health and I talked today, and that seems to be our collective recommendation to you all.
And are we making a, people have asked me about that. So during that section of the agenda, are we going to make some kind of formal recommendation? Are we focusing more just on the recreation activities that they have going on? Just so if people are watching now, do they continue to watch, or...
Well, it's really up to the board if they want to take a vote on that, if they want to make a recommendation. The Board of Health is not recommending to do that.
Not recommending to take a vote, or not recommending?
Not recommending to cancel it.
Cancel, so the Board of Health suggested.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, and it was just a little ambiguous, the way it was on the agenda, like, if we're just talking about the rec program or the whole, you know?
The whole thing.
Yeah, okay.
Some places have done that, but they tend to be more urbanized, or city environments. And there is a couple of communities nearest that have actually canceled it as well, but I think North Attleboro canceled it recently, too.
Bring it up for discussion.
Bring it up for discussion.
Yeah, let's talk about it during that.
Okay, is that all?
That's all I have.
Okay. Do you guys mind coming up early? Come on. Okay. We got fire department and planning, the hazardous mitigation plan update.
Hello?
Hi. You go. Yeah, you're going to be talking a lot later.
So this is the Assistant Fire Chief, obviously. Tom Buckley, Paige Duncan, I've been nominated to speak tonight, so I got the short straw.
We've missed you, we haven't heard from you in a while.
I know, well, you'll notice I'm on the agenda quite a bit tonight, so...
She's just doing this to warm up.
Exactly. So we are here to talk about the Hazard Mitigation Plan. We were here a couple of years ago. If you may recall, we got a grant from the state and the federal government to do this Hazard Mitigation Plan. The purpose for that is exactly what it says, you look at possible hazards, particularly related to climate change and other weather-type events, but you look at those hazards and predict where they might occur and plan for them. And so the federal government has required that towns do this every five years, for probably obvious reasons. And in order to be eligible for funding and whatnot from them, you have to have this plan in place. So the good thing is they funded most of it. We put in, I think, just under $5,000, although I think some of that even got waived with, they allowed us to use our time as sort of a monetary contribution, the value of that. So we were able to bring that down a bit. So we do have a Hazard Mitigation Plan, it's been posted on the website since February 26th, and I'm sure everybody's read it by now, it's a fascinating read. Everybody had a lot of free time since February, but in case you missed it, a Hazard Mitigation Plan includes a profile, it looks at land uses and critical facilities, it looks at a planning process. We actually had a planning team, we have quite a few members here, we have Jeff, Gabby, Chris Gallagher, Jane from the Conservation Commission, or Conservation Agent. So we were, we were all involved in this process, we had a consultant who assisted us, and we did hold public meeting, collected data. It wasn't something that garnered a lot of public input, you know, this type of topic isn't necessarily a big draw. So then we also, the plan will also talk about hazards, it's flood, wind, winter, fire, geologic. You know, around here, we deal a lot with the wind and the electricity and whatnot. Then there's the section on vulnerabilities and risk assessment, that's obvious, it looks at where the losses could be and tries to quantify some of the values. And then the plan includes mitigation measures to, so basically recommendations. So that's what we have in this document. Basically, the process followed all the requirements, it's called, what is it, STAPLE? STAPLE, Social, Technical, Administrative, Political, Legal, Economic, and Environmental Criteria, to look at all the requirements. And so we did actually get reviewed, and the plan has met the requirements. So at this point, we've been asked to come to you and ask that the board actually approve this document, because once we, the board does endorse it, then we are now eligible and we are now valid for five more years, so... I think that's probably the best overview, and I know it's a lot, I know you've got some materials. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
So this, every five years, we have to reconvene and renew all this. Do you guys, does the team meet in that five-year period to just check things, how are we doing, stuff like that?
Well, the last one that was, the town did was 2010, so it was not done in 2015, so that is definitely something that, you know, the current committee can actually look at. I think we have some continuity in the committee members, I mean, especially now, Chris in his new position, too, so a lot of the mitigation in the different plans that we've done over the last 10 years. The highway has done a bulk of, if not all of, those different recommendations that were in the 2010 plan. So with this plan here moving forward, again, Chris and his team will definitely be the forefront of mitigating some of the issues that came up during this consultant's review.
Okay.
And I do believe, and Chris knows a little more, we actually had, got another grant, I believe, for the next phase of this, which is the MVP program, Municipal Vulnerability Program. So this will dovetail nicely into that, so it will be a continuation. The government really is pushing towns to do this for obvious reasons, you know, the planning brings less loss in the future. So this will be probably something we start to see more of as we move forward, more planning, more, you know, making sure we take some mitigation measures in advance.
So in the, some of the documents that you had provided to us, there were some comments from whoever at the state or federal level reviewed it, some good comments, you know, a couple of well-dones and everything, but there were also a couple of recommendations. Did we accept and update our plan with their recommendations, or is that something that happens the next time we do this?
No, that should be all inside those, the program, the one that you're going to vote on tonight.
Okay, okay.
But some of them, though, I think, like, were also, I think it was both, the some that we could do were for the next time, to conclude, like, more businesses next time and whatnot, but they're allowing us to move forward, but next time, we might have to have a little more of a comprehensive outreach, which we'll admit is hard, and we've all seen, it's hard to get people to come to meetings, but we'll do, but we'll do it, and as we go through the MVP process, that's a much more rigorous exercise, I believe, there's a, what is it, an eight-hour public hearing, or eight-hour workshop or something? So it's a lot, so this is a, but obviously, with good reason, you know, we don't want to be wishing we had done it and all sitting around, you know, without a power or some sort of, you know, weather-related crisis, we'd rather be planning for this.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, Assistant Chief, did we involve just town operations or state operations, or did we actually reach out to business population to see if they had different items that they may have about hazardous material and how they're properly caring for it? If you could address that.
We didn't actually reach out to specific entities, we did reach out in an outreach program with, online and in the local newspaper, to try to reach out to the public and business owners. Did not get a lot of feedback back. We did incorporate some of the suggestions back in 2010 into today's, a part of it was the bleacher-y roadway aspect and some of the other, I think there was another one that was, that got carried forward, but we added some other newer hazards that we looked at. One of them was, was the new SEMREC up in High Rock, and incorporated that, because that wasn't in the 2010, and utilized some of that. So we just tried to use some of our local knowledge and tried to incorporate some of the things that we knew, but honestly, no, there was no businesses who actually came and said, "We would like to be part of this hazard." Again, we did, we did the reach out, but we didn't get any, like Paige says, it's trying hard to get people to commit to that type of stuff.
Well, thank you. Any other questions?
No.
We just need you to vote on accepting it, it's written, and then you have to sign off, we do have a form for you.
I think in your board docs, you might have...
Yeah, we've got it there.
You have that one?
We've got three copies.
Yeah, I got a bunch of them.
Is that, is that an updated one, or is that the one that Christina had?
This is just the same one, just a clean copy, yeah. And then that is the end of it, and then it gets published through FEMA and MIMA, and we're good to go, we're good for another five years.
And then we'll be back for MVP and the eight-hour workshop, and if anybody has any, you know, if anybody wants to get in touch with us, please do, we have businesses and whatnot, because now's the time, as we start to look at this.
Yeah, that's definitely something, Chief, that, you know, they can definitely do in that aspect, is try to reach out again to the business community, Paige has contacts now with the downtown and Route 1, so definitely something that they can work on that aspect.
Actually, it only needs to be signed by you, I was such a...
Right, yeah, the other was a different...
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve the updated Hazard Mitigation Plan as proposed.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Tom.
All right. Chris, you mind coming up a little early?
Again? I was waiting for Tim to come to the bar.
Yeah, we want Tim.
Yeah, we probably need...
Do our thing first?
Hold on, he's walking in the door now.
Okay. Almost, Paige, you almost jumped in front of him.
But I wouldn't leave on stage with this, anyway, so...
I told him, I said, "Wait outside, you know, 7:35."
Was that, oh, was that the clicker?
See if he's got something different.
If you send the file to Mike Weber, he can put it up on the thing.
You should have it in the board docs, you put...
Oh, great, okay.
Nothing like meeting him at the door.
Come on in. Come on in, you're on.
Hey, Tim.
Paige was trying to jump in.
I'm so...
Yeah, no, you just have one. I have... One, maybe two? Yeah, I just have two left to show, I think. That is all disconnected. Okay, it is. So you have, we sent the plans in board docs. I don't have that. You don't worry about this.
Well, we do.
Yeah, we have all the plans.
But for home, for TV, yeah.
I think he wants to put it on the screen, yeah.
I can send you the file.
If you can send me the file, I can pull it up in here.
All right.
It's just because of the Zoom call, I can't have both running at the same time.
Gotcha.
Understood.
Oh, okay.
I have a plan right here.
Technically, I hold your work sometimes, it doesn't work so good.
Who was the link right now, Mr. Chairman?
It was just a PDF.
Do you want to take it from one of our computers?
I think it needs to be in, like, his email, and, like, this computer wouldn't be plugged into...
I can give my report if you want.
Sure.
Yeah, it might take them a few minutes.
Yeah, take a few minutes.
All right, we're going to do a manager's report while we're waiting.
So please do not, we're going to do a veterans', the veterans' recognition that you've all been having for the past several, several meetings, is going to be the tree planting ceremony, is, it's already been planted, but we're going to actually do the placing of the plaque with the veterans on the next Tuesday, the 20th. All right, the plan is to do it, but it'll be at 10:00 AM in the morning. So if any, all of you can make it, great, if you can't, we understand, but that was, seems to be the best time that would work for everybody, so, okay?
Can Christina just send that out, just so that we all have it anywhere?
As a reminder.
Yeah, as a reminder, okay, we'll do that, okay? And then, and then also, another event that's coming up is the SEMREC ribbon cutting is scheduled for May, for November 17th. Again, it's also a Tuesday, but it's 11 o'clock in the morning. So that's, they're trying to get as many people as possible for that as well, but that's on November 17th, so that's over a month from now. The Halloween guidance I have, you'll see tonight, but I also have, you can get the Halloween guidance actually on the mass.gov site, the coronavirus site, there's, for anybody who's listening, can actually get that information by looking it up on the coronavirus updates, it actually provides the Halloween guidance, which is actually quite good, and put out by the CDC, follows the CDC guidelines. Don't forget the vote on November 3rd, it's coming up, and I know that ballots have been coming in, and we, I think we picked over 2,000 ballots already in town, so it's, so people are voting by mail, quite a few people are doing that, so it's actually good, because it obviously will help on the day of the actual election. And some really good news to celebrate, to show, to announce tonight, that I want to congratulate my daughter and her husband, Mike, on the birth of their first son, Jason Thomas, who was born on Sunday morning at 6:44 in the morning, six pounds, one ounce, all are doing fine, and she's, and they're already home, which is hard to believe, that they get you in and get you out.
That's right.
But, yeah, everybody's doing fine, though. Just talked to her tonight, she's doing really well.
Congratulations.
So you have a first grandchild?
First grandson, no, first grandson, first, second grandchild.
Okay.
So they have a boy, they have a girl and a boy, so I think they're all, they're done already. The combination, so, yeah, great news.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
All right.
All right, we're ready.
You're all set.
Thank you for having us back. I have Lance Del Piore, who's the town engineer, I don't know if anybody's seen or met him yet.
Yeah, I've seen him once.
And then Tim Thompson with Parkport. So we're here to wrap up the north end of the Common, the Main Street approach to the Common. We were here just about a year ago to do the temporary setup, I think it may have actually been October 13th or the 21st that we were setting up barrels a year ago to do the initial trial. The trial went well, we set up temporary curbing to give it a more of a finished feel, get rid of the barrels, give people an idea of what it would actually look like moving forward, give us an idea of what it would look like moving forward. So tonight, we're here to show the final plan, what the permanent islands will look like, the striping will look like, all the signage that goes along with it. We have two slides Tim's going to walk through, and then we can answer any questions and hopefully get a vote to move this forward as a permanent change.
All right.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, everyone. I'll just walk you through the, as Chris mentioned, the plans for the north end of the Common. If we could actually go back to sheet number four, or, excuse me, sheet number three of this set, I'll start there. Is it okay if I go?
Absolutely.
So just to orient you, the top of the screen here is Main Street, north of the top of the screen here, so the circulation around the Common is in this counterclockwise direction. The physical changes that are proposed at this intersection of the Common, including, it's a little tough to see on this white background, but as you know, there's a set of three islands that are on the approach from Main Street that have pedestrian pathways through, connect to crosswalks on three ends of that approach. Basically, the layout of the new curbing and sidewalk would be very similar to what's out there now with the temporary curbing that's in place, will be, you know, permanently reducing this section of the Common down to one circulating lane, and basically, these two ends of that existing island are going to be expanded out, and again, follow that, the pattern of the curbing, the temporary curbing that's currently out there. Then down on this end, what's out there now is a number of barrels to prevent traffic from going down Rock Hill. As you know, from the temporary condition, Rock Hill was converted to a one-way street going into the Common only. So those barrels were set up there in an attempt to dissuade people from entering into Rock Hill from the Common. So under the permanent condition, those barrels will be replaced with an extension of the vertical granite curbing in the sidewalk in front of the theater there. So if we want to go to the last sheet of this set, I'll walk through the striping and signing improvements there, down one more. Great, thank you. So some of the conditions that are out there as part of the temporary setup will remain in the permanent setup, most notably these, the signing and striping as you approach, coming up to the Main Street intersection through the Common. So currently, there's a lane assignment sign that's out there with a three-lane marking and a right turn marking to show that these lanes divide. There's also pavement markings that are within the travel lanes in that section of the Common, so those will remain. You can see here the outline of the new curbing that's going to be extending... You can see here the outline of the new curbing that's gonna be extending, uh, into that outer lane, uh, that reduces it down to the single lane. We're also adding, uh, new pedestrian crossing signage, warning signage on both sides of the crosswalk here, uh, so that'll be a nice, uh, safety and feature, safety enhancement feature, um, for that particular crosswalk. Uh, you'll also see an assortment of do not enter and one-way signage that will be positioned at the Rock Hill entrance, um, again, just to prevent people from, uh, heading down Rock Hill in the wrong direction. So that do not enter sign will be positioned on the new island on Rock Hill Street, and this island comes out about, uh, halfway across Rock Hill, um, so it really provides a, a bit of a physical barrier for, for people entering. And the fact that that do not enter sign's gonna be right there on that island is gonna be a nice clear indication for people to, to not go down that way.
Question, Tim, on the, on the islands, that one and the other two extensions, will those be just filled with concrete, or will they be a planting, planted island?
They will just be filled with concrete, so it'll be vertical curbing and just an extension of the, you know, typical concrete that's, that's out there in the sidewalks now. Um, there, there could be opportunities for there to be, you know, planters or, or something like that added, if, if that's something that the town wanted to pursue.
Similar to what we did out here in the parking lot.
Yeah, I just, with the size of them, I wasn't sure if we thought about doing physical, like, plantings in the ground or anything.
We thought about it, um, you know, the, the reason behind going with just, just concrete is, you know, we do have the planters scattered around, um, I think there's twenty-three of them up there right now, um, we could match, um, a couple additional planters on those, those islands. You know, what it does is it helps prevent anything from getting too big in those islands, you know, if you, if you do plantings, you know, have potential for obstruction, um, visibility issues that we wanna prevent, so, um, you know, it's something that lets us take it away, um, you know, sometime in November as, as the plantings are, are dying off and, and people are done taking care of them and.
Yeah.
Put them back in the spring.
And the size of the island that'll be in front of the theater, is that the, looks like six feet? I see six foot something on here.
Um, it's a six-inch, um, single white line.
Okay.
So that's just the markings around the curbing.
What's the overall size of that island?
I believe that comes out about ten or twelve feet, I have the dimension up here. It should be a location.
Um, well, it comes about thirteen feet, the nose of that island comes about thirteen feet off of the existing curb line. So what it does is it really prevents people from coming up Rock Hill thinking that they can go somewhere other than right, and people coming out of the BP and out of, off of Main Street keeps them kind of funneled to stay on.
So if that's coming out thirteen feet, what's the width of it? It's gotta be probably twenty.
Yeah, it's probably about, about twenty feet.
Yeah.
I, I should note too that the, uh, the restriction points on the, this side where the island comes out are where the transition stone for this accessible ramp begins, and then also where the driveway to BP begins. So really, to create something that has that flare effect, um, we're kind of limited by that unless we wanna, you know, we, we were trying to stay away from, from impacting driveways and the exist, existing ramps.
And I know we had to right-size kind of the, the bigger island because the trucks were having trouble, that will stay the same as what it is now, right?
That, actually, this, this layout here will be slightly smaller than what's out there now.
Okay, but not, not bigger, because I think they were having trouble when it was bigger.
Yes, exactly.
Mr. Chairman, just, uh, the one question I had, uh, the one-way sign that you have out there, Tim, is that, is that, what you were on the, and it's, it was a double, is the do not enter sign on top of that?
Yeah, they're, they're typically co-mounted, so one will be facing, you might have the do not enter sign facing this way, and then the one, one-way sign facing this way, so they're mounted on the same square, um, square post, but they're just oriented in a way so the one-way sign's pointing in the correct direction, and the do not enter sign's positioned in, uh, for highest visibility.
Is, is that really needed? Because, I mean, it, it's pretty clear, it can't, it can't go down that way.
Uh, well.
Put do not enter.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of times we like to put the one-way sign with the do not enter sign, so just as, you know, if somebody's new to the area and they're trying to, you know, park at the church or the theater or anything, they're, they're orienting themselves with the direction, uh, the traffic pattern of, of the surrounding roadway network by having that sign.
I just ask because it, sometimes it can be almost like sign pollution.
Yeah, yeah.
You get too many signs and it gets confusing sometimes with people.
And the do not enter sign that's close to the crosswalk in the center, no?
No.
That one?
Yeah.
Where does that, where would that physically be in?
So that's, that's existing now?
Yeah.
That actually faces Rock Hill Street? So that anybody coming down Rock Hill Street doesn't think they go straight.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, it goes straight.
Okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, that is an existing sign.
That makes more sense.
It's actually.
I was thinking.
Walk by there twice a day.
Um, and there is, we did actually get, um, a comment, um, by email, actually by Jim DeVellis, um, in regards to the, the driveway for the church, between the church and the Orpheum, the theater, that he has seen, and, and people come out of that small driveway, and they take a right down Rock Hill, um, which is now a one-way towards the common, so, his, his request and comment was add us a one-way sign, similar to where that, um, do not enter is, where the crosswalk is, right across in the corner of the, the firehouse, pointing towards the common, so that as they drive out of that driveway.
That's a good point.
They know that they should be going towards the common instead of going down towards Market Street, so, um, I just saw that about an hour ago, so Tim, I didn't get that to Tim yet, um, but that's something we'll probably add in as well.
And then there was also a comment about lighting, um, can the existing, uh, the lighting be horrible for Rock Hill intersection?
So that, yeah, there's a, there's a floodlight on that telephone pole that sits right at that corner, which, as I drove by it, is not working right now, so we'll take a look at that and either repair the floodlight that's there, or replace it with a, um, LED Cobra head, to better illuminate that crosswalk.
Any other questions?
I gotta say, I wasn't a fan at first, but it's working, um. You know, I really, I know that there's some people that really still have strong feelings about it, but, um, and I live off of South Street, so sometimes it can be a little tough to get over, and I know, you know, Judy had, had expressed some concerns of people cutting through to get back up to the theater, so I hope we're just keeping an eye, you know, on that stuff, um, but I, I, I mean, it's resolved the problem at Main Street for sure, so, good job.
What's the timeframe to do this?
I mean, we can buy curbing and it, you know, my thought is it'll be done before winter.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll buy the curbing and do the installation ourselves with the highway department.
Okay, and then next spring you would toy with the other side of the common?
Yeah, yeah, I think, um, you know, with, with where the world is, you know, doing anything down the other end, you know, isn't gonna give us a true feel for what the traffic patterns are. Um, you know, we are starting to see things pick up more, so we are seeing more vehicles out there, but, um, you know, waiting until people are back to commuting, um, you know, will be a big, big thing for down the other end. And again, down the other end, it's really, it's focused on keeping people in their own lane or using the directionals, um, it's gonna be difficult down there to do any physical barriers like this, um, down the other end, so it's probably more, um, pavement markings or, um, something other than just flat asphalt, whether we do like a rumble strip, um, do a, a stamped concrete or a, um, rubberized stamped asphalt with color and texture, something to delineate, that, that difference in the lane, so people aren't constantly driving from the inside to the outside.
Yeah, I think that's, that still happens a lot, um.
Incredible how many people take that right down commercial from the left wing.
It's bad, yeah, yeah. And I hope when we look at that, that we can look at, I think the crosswalks up that end, too, really make me nervous with everyone looking the other way and everything that's going on now, that I really hope we look at the crosswalks with the south end, which I know we didn't necessarily do that the northern, because we didn't have to, but I really hope that's a piece when we evaluate it next year.
Yeah, and one of the things I am looking at is, um, some grant funding to, to possibly buy a couple more of those, um, illuminated crosswalk signs, deactivated pet signs, so, um, we have some grant opportunities through Maya, that nobody else has jumped at yet, so that may be something I'm looking at utilizing that funding for, um, those, each of those signs are probably now thirty-five hundred, four thousand dollars a piece, so, um, you know, not, not a small amount of money, so, we're looking at those options.
I, I have a comment about the input of Main Street into the common, uh, I've noticed that the vehicles coming into the common, uh, have excessive speeds, and if you're trying to merge traffic to get over, so you can go down School Street to South Street, uh, they're going awful fast. Are there s- slow signs coming into that intersection? I know it's a state road, but, uh, isn't it within the guidelines in terms of a twenty mile per hour, because we've got one on Central Street?
Sure.
Which should be moved back to Gray Road, but that's my personal opinion. But I, I don't recall, because I very rarely come into the center from Main Street, uh, but I do make Chestnut to Baker and undergo the risk with people when I wanna get onto South.
Right, um, yeah, I'll have to look and see, um, where the speed limit signs are on Main Street, um, I know further up, um, it is signed at thirty-five miles an hour, I think it's thirty with, um, let's sort of think of it. It's signed at thirty miles an hour, thickly settled, um, so, you know, that is something that the board has the, the ability, if they wanted to do it, you know, drop it down to twenty-five, um, if it's not already signed at twenty. Um, I know Central Street, um, as well as Coacassit Street are both signed at twenty miles an hour going into the common, um, so those are things, that's something we can look at as well.
Or even if on the pavement it said, like, as you were coming off Main, like, cars merging or, you know, be nice, allow, I don't know what else we can put on the pavement to basically let cars from Main Street know that they need to allow others, you know, to merge.
Is, is, you know, same thing like Dr. said, you drive by it all the time, and now you're trying to think in your head, is there a merge sign as they're, as they're coming onto the common from Main?
So there's.
Or, or do we do, because I think what happens is, um, like, talking about the speed, they just figure they ha, they have the right of way and they just don't slow down at all, and then tha, that's what happens, and, and it's funny because, um, my daughter was home this weekend, and she is, we're coming, and she comes in, all of a sudden, she, she goes to the inside lane, and then she, we're gonna, we're gonna take a right down Coacassit, and I said to her, I said, what are you doing? Why are you going over? I'm like, you're going to be taking, the only place I felt like she had to do that move over was for the to, for the top of the common, so she's coming on, and then she goes to the middle, and then just as she makes that turn by commercial, then she, she, then she goes back out to go down, I said, stay in the right lane, you're going to be taking a right, I just felt like, I didn't, I wasn't in favor, in favor of it when we first started hearing about it too, because I just felt like when you learned how to drive, they told you, if you're going to be taking a right, stay to the right, so, we, so, I would come onto the common from Coacassit Street, and if I wanna go to South Street, I'm going all the way around the common, but, like Leah said, it's, it's, it's working, because the, you know, now I love when you come up Main Street, you're not backed up to Dairy Queen, so.
There's no traffic.
And I think it's helped, I think it's helped Baker, I mean, that's just a non-factual observation, but it feels like it has.
Yeah, but, um, yeah, I, it'd be interesting to see what you guys do for the other end, because as somebody who travels there and then is, is going to, I'm, I'm in that right lane because I'm gonna turn down Coacassit Street, and those people, they, they don't, they don't even let up, they just right, right in front of you, and, um, and so it'll be interesting to see what, um, what you guys can come up for the other end.
Sure.
You know, I don't have any suggestions, I know it's gonna be, you know, it's just, um, yeah, they, they just don't care, you know, they just, um, and, and there's no hesitation, it's not even like, I feel like if there was something on the ground, like, they don't care, they just, you know, right down, and, um, I, I think a lot of them have had plenty of time to get to that right, they just, they just figure, you know.
It's, it's an old habit, it's hard to break.
Yeah.
You know, they're in there, the ones that have used the inside lane are just used to just going straight down Central Street, and, you know, with a blinker, without a blinker, they just go from the inside lane and, you know, everybody else takes a guess.
On the speed limit, if we have two other ones coming in at twenty, I think we should be consistent.
Sure.
Um, so that's a good point, Ed, so if you can look into that.
Any other questions?
Just, just, a lot of hard work, you guys did a nice job.
Did a nice job, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, motion to approve the town common's circulation improvements as presented by the DPW and, is it Pear?
Par.
Par, Par Corporation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. So in our, um, meeting, uh, every time we have a meeting, we start a new process of having a, uh, director come in and discuss their department, give us a little mid-year heads-up, and, uh, Paige, you're up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, so, we have a little bit of a overview, this is about the planning department, less so about the planning board, so I'm Paige Duncan, planning director, we have Gabriella, or Gabby Jordan, she's our staff planner, and we have Diana Gray, um, she's our land use administrator, um, I dragged them out tonight, well, Gabby was stuck coming to the hazard mitigation thing, because she did most of the work, let's be real, um, but I wanted you all to meet Diana as well, because, um, there's something unique that goes on in Foxborough, and, um, I just wanted everybody to be aware of sort of the efficiencies that are going on, so, um, anyway, Diana is unique because she works for three boards, um, she works for the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, and the Zoning Board, and that's something that I know other communities are quite envious of, it's a very efficient process, we're extremely fortunate to have those efficiencies, so I wanted to, you know, bring that to light, um, it doesn't come without cost to Diana, I mean, she goes to meetings pretty much every, you know, every week, she has at least one, sometimes two, um, we're very fortunate because we have her expertise, um, with respect to, um, understanding public hearing requirements and notification, really, she just handles all that. So I wanted you all to meet Diana, she doesn't really get to come to meetings, and she hates this right now, so I apologize, but I did wanna acknowledge that, um, just by way of fact, Diana and I have actually worked together since two thousand and six, um, she did the same position, well, not Conservation Commission, but she did zoning and planning in Rentham, and then I joined that group, so we were together from two thousand and six on, and then Sharon Watson and Gabby stole her from me, and brought her over to, and Bill brought her over to Foxborough, um, and then they basically recruited me back over to Foxborough a few years later, so that's sort of, we have a long history. Gabby's been here since two thousand and three, um, so she's, she's our historian, uh, and she's also a town resident, so it's very, um, has a lot of expertise that we really rely on, um, so that's our planning department. Um, if you call, you're probably gonna talk to Diana, but you might get one of us, um, and we also have Jane Pierce in our physical space, I think you'll probably hear from her individually. Let's see if this works. Oh, no, that's a thing, hold on. Okay, so I'm not gonna go too much into the planning board, but, um, I just wanted to say they're, they're sort of our reason for existence, shall we say, the, the planning board is an elected board, and, um, and much of our work is associated for our planning board purposes. And just for residents, you know, since we're providing an overview, um, the planning board is an elected board, and they, they, um, handle the orderly growth and the development of the community, um, you'll, you'll see public hearing notices, and we have meetings, and the planning board has also been in charge of the master plan, and there's heavy involvement in any zoning amendments, so, um, the planning board plays an important role in the community, um, typically, um, you'll run into them when you have like a subdivision be, built near you, or a commercial development, you'll get a public hearing notice, and usually we meet people that aren't very happy, honestly, you know, sometimes they're coming and they don't, they don't want, you know, what's going on, um, so, um, the planning board looks at special permits, um, that's a very discretionary, oops. Um, we do special permits, site plan approval, subdivisions, and scenic roads, so that was basically, what does that mean, it means a subdivision is basically a new neighborhood, so any one of those developments where you see new houses going up, you have to build a road to serve that, so that's, um, something the planning board will handle. Um, site plan approval is typically for commercial development, and the, the key on that is that it's a by right use, um, a lot of times, the process we have to go through makes it seem as if the planning board has discretion, but our site plan approval actually means it's allowed by right, um, but the planning board actually has discretion on sort of layout and design, but not necessarily prohibition on the use. So that's one thing that, um, people don't always realize about the planning board is, um, and probably like you, sometimes your hands are tied, there are very clear laws and, in the state, and, uh, the, you know, there are property rights, so something like a subdivision, that too is a by right use. If, if someone comes in with a subdivision and doesn't need any waivers, it has to be granted, so, um, there's different le, levels of discretion, but I do think it's important for residents to understand that sometimes the board, um, that sometimes the board doesn't really, can't really say no. And I know personally, having been here five years, that the board works really hard to address concerns. And so we do encourage folks to come to meetings and to participate, or send emails, because the planning board really does listen. So the master plan, I am just bringing this up, because it's such an important document to the community. The planning board is the board that spearheads this effort and the planning staff. I wasn't here when it was written, but I know Gabby and in part Diana lived through, Diana lived through the tail end of it. So that is a comprehensive planning process. It is available on our website, residents should take a look. It's long, but if you go to the back and you look at the recommendations, that kind of is the meat of the process. It shows you what the town's working towards. And that's, I always say, I'm fortunate that I came to Foxborough that had such a great master plan, because to me, that's the roadmap to the community. You know, like, I know kind of how, how special Uptown is. I know that, you know, the residents really want commercial drill mostly out on Route 1. You know, they really want to keep the population about the same and protect the characteristics. So those things are all prescribed in the master plan. And so the, and just to be clear, the master plan is a required document. The state, unfortunately, it's typically an unfunded mandate, which means that basically while it's a requirement document, the town doesn't get money necessarily to do it. But Foxborough, I went, I think I went about 40 years without doing one, and then did do one in 2012. Started in 2012, was approved in 2015, and has been adopted, and in fact, has won an award from the Massachusetts Planning Association. So the status of the master plan, this is the fun part. So here's just a sample list of some of the accomplishments, and I only show this just so the community can see how much has been done. Sewer capacity uptown, stormwater bylaw, fire station. Now, I know that hasn't, doesn't show a lot of progress, but a tremendous amount of work has gone into the fire station in an effort to revitalize Uptown. The town hall, one of the goals of the master plan was to keep it uptown. That was accomplished. So that's a great, SEMREC was mentioned in there. The water resources map and bylaw, we did that a couple of years ago. Let's see, what's next? Complete streets, commuter rail, restaurants uptown, working on liquor licenses for uptown. We did that. We still have one or two available. The farmer's market, I can't take credit for that, but Recreation did a great job getting that up there. Payson Road, and then the Ella Hill Playground, which is over in East Foxborough. So that's just, those are only a smattering of sort of what's been accomplished. But if you all wonder what sort of the planning staff and/or the town staff are doing, these are just a few of the things that we are involved in over the past five-plus years. Other things we've been working on are, we serve as, I staff the Economic Development Committee, and you all know that's a very active group. The Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, well, that's not necessarily a town entity. It's something that began as a result of a grant we got with MAPC to talk to uptown businesses and find out what they needed. And as a result of that engagement, the FCBC, FCBC was created. So that's something that, you know, we're trying to really foster, and I think it's starting to grow and develop. And we're really starting to see some cohesion uptown. The Housing Production Plan, we all know about that. We'll be talking about that in more than a minute. And then the Housing Coalition, that's the monthly group that talks about housing. Design Review Board, Wayfinding and Branding, Affordable Housing Trust, Billboard Advisory, and Hazard Mitigation. So those are just a few of the things that we do. You know, any one of us will get involved in any one of these. Diana handles design review, Bob PC calls her. So there's just a lot of moving parts, but it's a great team we have, where we all kind of work together. Another thing we spend a lot of time on is grants. Foxborough's really good at getting grants. I could tell you that in Rentham, we got very few grants. Foxborough does a fabulous job positioning itself to seek these grants. So most recently, we got almost $100,000 in CB, CDBG funding. Just as a little plug, we still do have, you could still apply for this grant application. The deadline for the first phase was October 7th, but we haven't yet spent all the money. So if anybody does want to call or email me, I've been sending out information all day to various people who've been hearing about this on social media. So I really think that people are starting to hear about it. But we do have the opportunity to give grants to micro enterprises, five or fewer businesses. So please be in touch. That's a really important one, and we know, and we're, we have our ear to the ground trying to find more funding for businesses. We know that it's desperately needed. Unfortunately, you know, the grant, the funding from the federal, well, the state is locked up. We'd have no budget at the state right now. We're all waiting for the federal government. So as we know, things are kind of at a stalemate right now. So we're hoping that with the election, we'll start to see some movement, and we can get some more grants for other businesses, because we know this is a very small slice. The Housing Choice Grant was a big one. We now have a signal design for Commercial Street and Walnut Street. And that's gonna support the Housing Authority project that's hopefully gonna be underway soon. We got the, the grant to do the housing production plan. We got the mitigation grant for the hazard mitigation plan we just talked about. Wayfinding Branding, that was also a grant. And I know folks are anxious for those banners, and Leah and I could attest to the fact that they are, they're coming. They're in production right now, and I know it's been a long wait, but there's been so many people working on this, and there's been so many moving parts, and they really are coming. Stay tuned with the signs as well. The benefit is, we're using a Foxborough business to do this, so, you know, that's why, we're not sending this out to a big company. We are doing this locally with a local business, and we really, he, he's been tremendous working and being patient, working with us as we change the rules every 10 minutes. But no, we're finally done, and we're ready. The Gaming Commission, we work with Plainville, Rentham, and Foxborough. We actually are now seeking to establish a website for the three communities and their, their major venues to promote our area as a regional destination. We already have an inventory done, and now we are, I'm waiting, well, I'm, they're waiting on me. I'm waiting to submit a request to use the remaining $75,000 we got in funding to create the website and have someone write up the content. So that's just something I haven't gotten to, but I need to do it this week. And then lastly, I just wanted to mention the Mass Works Grant we got. While I can't say that I wrote all that grant, that was a big DPW effort. We all worked really well together, and that was a huge effort. As you know, it took years, and Roger Hill gets major kudos for getting through that state process. But that was a big one, and I think we can all agree that, that roundabout is fabulous. We do hope to apply for another Mass Works Grant next spring, summer, for the Walnut Street signal. In my opinion, I've decided that if there's gonna be affordable housing on Walnut Street, and that's a state highway and a state problem, I feel that the state should pay for the signal. So we'll see. I don't know if they'll agree.
So that brings up a question I was gonna bring up.
Sure.
And that's, what, what happened two, three years ago when the state came in and looked at that? And again, was, we were told that it didn't need a light. What was that program? I, I can't think of...
No, that was SERPED. That was the Regional Planning Agency for Mansfield and Norton, and they looked at 140. They did study that intersection. In fact, that intersection did warrant a signal. The problem was, is, this was just a study. There was no funding, there was no nothing. So, but that did show that a signal could be justified there. So we, we know that, because some places you can't put a signal. So we do know it's demanded there. And especially due to the high rates of speed. People are traveling so fast that it's a very dangerous situation there. We know the other intersection with Commercial and Central is bad too, but people aren't usually going as fast. So the, the danger to life and limb, I believe, is a little bit lower. Up at Commercial and Walnut, people are just traveling so fast that it's, it's a high priority. That said, it's never gonna get built on its own. You know, it is not on a tip, it's not on any, there's no, no one looking at that intersection right now. So that's why we feel that if we go for a Mass Works Grant that has to be tied to housing, which the Housing Authority was already planning on working on, we feel it's a win-win. And in my mind, I've, I've decided that it's needed to be done, because again, this is not Foxborough's intersection. This is the state's intersection, but...
Mr. Chairman, just on that point, there were a number of improvements that came out of that study, including the one at Commercial and Route 140 as well, that was supposed to be, they said actually warranted a signal. And then also another one, another big one in Norton. There was another one in Mansfield. There were several changes that were being recommended. Now, that really was the first step in the process. That's why it takes years to get these things done. Because once you make the recommendations, once they make the recommendations to us, then we have to get, gather the support of the legislature and the state to actually come out and actually pay for some of the improvements. Because as you correctly point out, it's, it's a state highway. So we can't, we're not really allowed to make those improvements. So if it's, I mean, I suppose that they will allow us to do it, but we're not gonna do that. I mean, why would we do that under those conditions? So it's, but it's something that we'll, we continue to look at. If the opportunity arises, then, you know, when, when there's a real project in hand, that's when you can, you can get the support behind the effort to try and get the thing funded. So I think that's, I think that really probably has a better chance, believe it or not, of that getting funded than even the Commercial, Commercial Street.
Definitely, yeah. Right. So that's, we'll talk a little bit more about housing in a slide or two. And I'm almost done, don't worry, I talk fast. Subdivisions. Gabby pointed out that folks might be curious about this. As I mentioned, a subdivision is basically a new neighborhood. In order to put up a new house, you need to have a certain amount of frontage on a street. In order to get that frontage, you have to build a road. So that's how we end up with these little roads around town. The plant, things have slowed down, you know, from the 80s and the 90s. We see more single lots and two-lot subdivisions. And we do have, but we do have two large, three larger subdivisions. Lawson Farms, which is over on Main Street as it approaches Route 1. London Estates, which is over by the Dairy Queen sort of area, and then River Ridge, which is East Belcher. River Ridge is the newest one. I believe they're just getting ready to pull building permits now to start construction out there. For each one of these projects, the planning board does get a surety, or, you know, some, takes money for the construction of the road, so that the developer ever did walk away or default or whatnot, the town has sufficient funds, well, it's never enough, but the town has mostly enough funds to get the roadway built and, so that the town does not get stuck with an incomplete subdivision. Gabby herself had to handle that a lot for the, for the last economic downturn. I don't, you built three subdivisions? Basically, she was handling things from like plantings to curbing, right, to bounds. I mean, Gabby pretty much built subdivisions, so. And we also have a, an inspector the planning board uses. It's a gentleman. We collect an inspection fee for each subdivision, and then this gentleman is, Norm is how old?
He's 86.
86. Retired engineer. He's fabulous.
He knows his stuff. He's really good.
He is, and he's tough, in a good way tough, you know what I mean? I mean, he, he represents the community well, and he makes sure the town's protected. I can tell you that in Rentham, we didn't have inspections. And at one point, we found out that a builder was using spray foam inside the catch basins to hold the bricks in place. So can you imagine that in five years, we were always wondering why these catch basins are collapsing? Well, because there was, so you really do need that watchdog there, and Foxborough is well set up for that. So it's really worked out well.
Does he go out as they're doing work?
Yes. Yes, he inspects when they're installing the drainage. And he's also there when they're doing the paving, to make sure that everything has the right measure. They have to do, you know, an inch and a half of this, and he makes sure that that's done.
Yeah, like temperature, sieve analysis, all these things, and he...
Oh, that's good.
Very serious.
He has a thermometer to make sure that the asphalt is the right temperature.
Good. Actually, I didn't realize that. I thought whether the DPW director at the end would go and say, "Yep, this is good," but that, that's...
That's how a lot of communities do it, and that's how they end up with a lot of trouble. So Foxborough, I remember when we were in Rentham, being envious of Foxborough, because Tom Rinn, who's in the building department, he was chairman of the planning board at the time. And he's like, "You gotta do like Rentham and just get a norm." I'm like, "I need a norm. Find me a norm." But they're hard to find too, so that's the other thing. I mean, we pray he doesn't retire anytime soon, because, you know, I mean, he's a, he's a very good value, and also, we really trust him. So, and the other note I'll just say is, you know, again, and I'll be talking about housing as I always do, but you'll note, every house it's built is huge. So that's just, that's the sort of problem with housing out here in the suburbs. The land costs are so high, that really, in order to, if you have to buy an acre lot for $250,000 or $275,000 just for the land alone, a builder's not gonna put up a 1,200 square foot house and sell it for $400,000. It just financially cannot work. So that's why we're seeing, you know, I mean, the, the River Ridge houses are gonna be quite affordable, in my opinion. And I mean, they're $550,000 to $650,000, and they're great. I mean, they're a great offer, that's a fabulous value, but it just shows the costs of housing in this region. And even with COVID, it's weird, but I don't, and Leah could speak to this more. You know, the housing market's gotten hotter, maybe because of the supply's less. So we're, we're seeing the values continue to go up, and it's just making things more difficult. Which leads me to the next thing, is accessory apartments. You might hear a conversation, nothing's been decided on this, and nothing could be decided without a zoning change. So it would go to town meeting. But just so you know, through the housing discussions, it's been a lot of talk about looking into the accessory apartment bylaw. Right now, we do allow accessory apartments, and they're limited to resident, uh, family members only. There's been a discussion at the Housing Coalition, which is a group of interested residents who meet monthly, now on Zoom. Anyone's welcome. That, you know, really, the, the community needs smaller housing options, and they're not being built. So something like an in-law apartment, or, you know, they call them granny flats or an accessory apartment, having that, whether it's attached to your home or not attached to your home, and being able to rent that out is something that provides choice. You know, you might have a senior citizen who rents, you know, this attached apartment behind you, and it creates a great thing. Now, I know there's a lot of concern around it, and there will be a lot of discussion about it. I'm not necessar, I'm a planner who's promoting something that I think will help the community, but I also want to acknowledge that there's a lot of concern. And the planning board isn't necessarily opted into this at this point, but we are going to be having this conversation over the next year, so stay tuned for that. But the planning board does handle accessory apartments right now. We're starting to see more come in, and we're starting to see more come in, as mentioned there, in new construction. It used to be that you'd carve one out of your house in the back or add an addition, and now people are building new homes in these big, in these big new homes, and they want to add the in-law apartment to it. And most recently, or a couple of times ago, we had, you know, people are younger and younger as they want to do this. So it's like they have a young couple with a child or two, and then you have a young senior couple who's, you know, maybe in their late 50s or early 60s. They've got years to go. They don't want to live in 800 square feet necessarily. They might want 1,200. So it's, it's a discussion. I know there's fear around it, but I also want to point out that there is just no option being created in housing right now, except large houses, or you've got your 40Bs, which we can't, we don't have to allow anymore, so that town has control over that. But, I mean, that's what you saw, apartments or big houses, and that's really been the choice lately. I'm gonna get off my soapbox on that. So just to wrap up, our current projects are to finalize the housing production plan, to continue to work with the EDC. I should note that there is a survey out there right now about the impacts of COVID. If you go to the EDC website, choosefoxborough.com. Actually, it's not on there yet. I haven't gotten it on there yet. I was gonna say, check that out, because it has a lot of great information on there. We are also gonna be supporting the Housing Authority with the Walnut Street project, continuing with the Mass Gaming Project to create the regional destination. And then, as we mentioned earlier, the Municipal Vulnerable Preparedness is, is another project that's gonna be kicking off. For the housing production plan, the project that never ends, it's almost here. I just wanted to get the schedule out here. We're reviewing drafts right now. The goal is, is by the end of the year, to have this draft to your board, to the Board of Selectmen, and we're, and to the planning board, and we're ultimately hoping, hoping for a vote of approval. So I've explained to MAPC that Foxborough is more like a, a slow yes and a fast no. So I'm not gonna try to rush it through, but I would ask that you all, you know, review it when you get it, and, and really make your comments on it, because this is our chance to comment on this housing production plan. A ton of work has gone into it, and we're really trying to find viable solutions that are not gonna change Foxborough. So make sure that, do it. And I won't go through all this, but my last thing before I get off the soapbox is I know that people say that Foxborough doesn't have a housing problem, and I just want to point out that 30% of Foxborough households right now are cost burdened. And that means that we, over 30% of their income is being spent on housing. So that's, that's classified as difficult. The average household could not afford a house in Foxborough right now. 34% of households in Foxborough are considered low income under today's standards. And the senior population is 55%. So I know, everybody says we don't have a housing problem, because a lot of people have houses and they're all set. But there are a lot of people in this community that are not all set, and I've been hearing from a lot of them. So I just ask that when you review the housing production plan, you keep an open mind. We're not trying to change the community, but we're trying to meet the needs of those that are here in the community that just need a little variety. They can't afford the big $700,000 house. They might not want to live in just an apart, you know, nothing wrong with an apartment, but some folks want to have a dog, or they want to have a garden, you know? They want to have options. So let's, as a community, come together and figure out if there's a way to do that. And that's, I think, all I have. I'll let you guys ask questions. Sorry, the housing thing is tough.
I think just the explanation point on that last point is that without changing the fabric of the community, that's really important.
Yes.
And we all, we recognize that's really, really important, but by the same token, there's still a need, and that need has to be met somehow.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Walnut Street, how far along is, or do we...
There's no design yet.
No design?
No. That's, what I'm hoping will happen is to meet with the Housing Authority in the next month or so and talk to them about the plan. We did apply for a grant to get some assistance to create an RFP for that site, and then start talking about design and, and sort of... And then start talking about design and sort of, we know, you know, for example, we want to be very sensitive to the, to the North High residents. We don't, we don't want high rises, you know, like most projects like that, you're going to see some, it's like a forty B. You'll see someone come in and go, oh, put three large boxes up and you get a bunch of apartments and you're all set. Because that's what builders, it's easy, it's cheap and, but that's not what Foxborough's looking for. We might need to have some apartments over there, but we're also looking to find a way to meet, whether it's townhomes or little flats. But we also have to be aware of the market. You know, if we prescribe too much and the market looks at it and says that's not going to make us money, then we will get no developer. So we have to work that through. And that's where we're hoping that this mass development grant can assist us. I envision a working group of some sort to move forward with this. Because I think it's going to have to be a process of the community. But again, I don't want to act like I'm in charge of it because it is a Housing Authority project, but I am willing to help if they want the help.
I guess just playing off that, you know, Paige saying she's willing to help wherever it's needed, you know, serving on a number of these other projects with you, Paige is everywhere with her hands in everything and just does a really good job, obviously. Diana and Gabby too. So I think a lot of what you do is behind the scenes and you build some great relationships, you know, in, in town hall and with residents and with businesses. And, you know, tomorrow we'll be on a call at seven thirty AM with the Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, you know, Paige is always there. So, so thank you for all that.
Thank you.
You call the worker bee.
Yeah, you want to get something done?
You call the worker bee.
Paige will be on it. One thing, I sound like a broken record, I know you guys have heard this, but if we can email out the Planning Board Conservation and Board of Appeals minutes and meeting agendas, I know that was one of the goals for two thousand and twenty, we're halfway through. I think that that's, besides like the Board of Selectmen, you know, a couple of times it's come up tonight, how we need people to be engaged and be involved. And I think people can go out and subscribe and they can get all that stuff to their inbox. I know, you know, I have my eyes on everything and sometimes when it comes to my email, I'm like, oh, this is going on. I didn't, I didn't realize this, you know? So I really hope we can kind of get, get those posted and get the community a little bit more involved too with those types of notices, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Try and bring it.
Thanks.
All right. Couple of minutes late, but recreation?
Yes.
Just in time.
Everyone wants to hear about Halloween.
Halloween? Renee and I are here to discuss Halloween. I told you that we had a couple of things in the works, but we weren't able to announce them at that time. We have two, three events going on. One is going to commence this weekend where we're hiding Halloween eggs in people's yards that signed up to have that done. We sold out of that in one or two days. The other events are, we're doing a Fox Boo Boo trick or treat drive-through. We got permission to use the ahorn, so people will be driving in using the Chestnut Street, excuse me, the Mechanic Street entrance, drive in, drive around the loop where there will be recreation, representation from the Craft Group, the Foxborough Police Department, the Foxborough Highway Department, the Foxborough Fire Department, church, the Grace Church, Grace Chapel. Folks have also volunteered and Friends of Foxborough Recreation have been instrumental in helping us pull that all together. So it's a really down home event, figuring that we have those departments all participating. And that's what we were striving for.
That'll be Saturday, the thirty-first.
Saturday, the thirty-first. We're going to have registration once it's up on our site because we want to have an idea of the number. It may not be accurate, but at least, you know, I can tell the Craft Group or the Police Department or the Fire Department how many families, children that they should be prepared for. So that is on Saturday, the thirty-first, from two to four. It will be up on our website for people to pre-register so we get an idea. And then the other idea is Renee's all time favorite, the uncommon pumpkin patch, where we try and line the outside of the common with carved pumpkins. So that flyer has already been up and posted. And our first year, I think we had seven pumpkins. The next year, we had twelve and then we had thirty-five last year. So I'm hoping to get a few more. We supply the little tea lights, the little battery operated ones. And we just ask that people bring a pumpkin up. And this year, we're going to actually judge them and have a couple of prizes. I carved it myself will be for the little kids type of thing, the most creative and the scariest. I think it was the scariest was the other one. So we're hoping to get, you know, a few more around. Which is another hometown event, obviously. It's on our common. The Foxborough families contribute. And Town Hall has always been very eager to participate with each department, having done them in the past. So we hope that that will continue as well. Halloween as a whole is happening, though that there are great suggestions from our own Board of Health, such as low risk activities. Do it in your own neighborhood. Maybe have a small party in your home. Do a scavenger hunt at your home. Have a virtual costume contest. These are all ideas that were put forth by our Board of Health in order to have a safe, yet fun Halloween. So I think that's probably the most asked question these days, or one of them, is trick or treating on. The answer is yes, but with safety in mind and perhaps just doing it in your own neighborhood. Or again, one of these more inventive activities you can do. Still applying is the social distancing, wearing a mask, under your mask and staying home if you've traveled. Still the same regulations and policies are in place for Halloween.
Will you explain how, how that event is working? I know you said up the hurt. So is it just going to be like the cars will drive by?
Yes. And each, and somebody is going to give them, if you have three kids in your car, you'll get a bag of candy from each of those departments.
Okay.
So, you know, we could end up with five bags of candy if everybody shows up. Jim DeValise's truck will be there. Anybody I've left out?
Nope, that was it.
Foxborough Common Business Collaborative, we're talking to them tomorrow.
Yes, Foxborough Business Collaborative. Thank you for bringing that up. They may, there may be a few businesses in town that want to participate. Because if you remember, our parade always had trick or treating at the businesses uptown as we went through the streets of Foxborough. So that there may be businesses that want to participate in person or perhaps donate to the purchase of candy or help in other ways. That's, the Grace Chapel is doing a lot of donating of bodies for the event that we need. And that's Halloweeny.
Any questions from the board?
No.
No, I think, yeah, I think that satisfies. And I think, you know, people are looking for us to take a stance. And I think that it sounds like, you know, I'm paraphrasing, but our stance is we have the CDC guidelines, we have the guidelines from our Board of Health. Follow the rules and do what you feel comfortable within safety and reason for you and your family.
Yeah. And if it's, and if it's not for you, it's.
Right. Shut off your lights.
Not for you, but it's, yeah, exactly. Well, you know, it's, it's nice just to still bring a little normalcy to the kids.
We think so. We think it's important.
Yeah. I mean, as long as we follow the rules, I think it's going to be a great event.
Well, I'm just so proud.
It'd be good for you guys to, you know.
I'm proud of work with all the other departments. I thought that was awesome.
Yeah.
That they all agreed.
That's good.
And are we doing it in blocks? Like are, are people signing up for like one to two or two to three? Or is it just come anytime, two to four?
No, we're going to split the alphabet in half. So two to three and then three to four. And if we need additional police help, Chief Grace has been gracious in saying that he will supply it. We don't, we've not done it before. It's one of those things that, once again, we don't know what to expect. But everything that we seem to do is extremely popular and we hope that this proves to be the case too.
There's going to be a line out to.
Out to Mechanics Street? Great.
Just make sure you pre-register.
Yeah. Well, you know, and that, that brings its own challenges because not everybody will, but at least we can get a number. Some way. Get a number.
So this, again, just a reminder that if, if anyone's interested in looking at some of the suggested guidelines for doing a safe Halloween event, it's actually listed on the mass.gov website under the COVID nineteen information for local boards of health. It's called, it's called Halloween During COVID Nineteen. It's dated ten, seven, twenty twenty, so it just literally came out. And so it's, it's, it's actually, it's got some great ideas. It just says, enjoy Halloween outside rather than indoor events. Place candy on a platter instead of a bowl so people aren't digging into a bowl. You know, just take one and leave. Instead of traditional trick or treating, opt for one-way trick or treating with treats placed outside the home for trick or treaters as a grab and go while keeping distance from others. Constant, consider leaving hand sanitizer by any treats left for trick or treaters to use. Wear a face mask or face covering. More, for more information on that, you can go, there's a, there's a dropdown page for that. Costume mask is not a substitute for a face mask or face covering. To protect yourself and others, ensure you are wearing a protective face mask or covering inside or in the addition to the costume mask. That's highly recommended. And observe good hand hygiene, including the hand washing and use of alcohol space sanitizer with at least sixty percent alcohol. Carry hand sanitizer with you and use it often, especially after coming into contact with frequently touched services or being, or before eating any candy. So those are just some of the highlights of that page, but it's really, really well thought out and the CDC has done a great job of working with the Boards of Health and the State Department of Public Health to develop these guidelines.
So we would suggest people register once it's up online and please carve a pumpkin to put on our common.
Thank you. Thank you for updating us.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Deb.
Thanks.
Thanks for all the creativity and making stuff.
Thanks for all the support.
Ladies, we appreciate it.
Mike, there you are. Look at that.
There he is.
Can you hear us?
Right on cue.
I can.
Can't hear you.
Turn you up a little bit, Mike.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
There you go.
There you go. We're right in time for you, Assistant Town Managers Report.
Okay, great. So we've got a number of recruitments we're working on, basically filling positions that are necessary due to retirements or, or people have, you know, transferred to another place. So one of the things we're working on is a custodian for the public safety building. Another is custodian for the Council on Aging, you know, both retirements. We're in the process of recruiting a senior youth services librarian, as well as a lot of systems technician, a highway laborer and an equipment mechanic. No new positions here. These are just filling existing positions that we deem essential to continue services in the town. In addition to recruitments, we are still involved in the police negotiations. The end of this week, we'll have our third session and negotiations going well. You know, both management and union negotiation teams are working very hard at this to bring, bring something back to the board, you know, for the, for the next town meeting. Another thing we've been very hard at work on is unemployment claims. And I have to say that ninety-five percent of the unemployment claims we're dealing with are fraudulent claims and this is a nationwide trend. And we got a letter from the state of Massachusetts saying that they're, they think some of these fraudulent claims may be tied back to some of the big corporate hackings that happened. If you think like TJX and something like that. So that's keeping us very busy. I'm hoping that this is going to be my last remote meeting because tomorrow I go and see my orthopedic surgeon and I'm hoping he'll clear me to drive later this week. I do want to mention again, the website that Bill just gave out, because I think it really has some great tips on safe trick or treating and safe celebration of Halloween. And that's mass.gov/news/halloween-during-COVID-19. And last but not least, today is the two hundred and forty-fifth birthday of the United States Navy. So happy birthday.
Being a Navy veteran yourself, I kind of wonder how you remembered that.
No figure.
Go Army. That was, that was a little channel towards this guy right here, I think, wasn't it?
Something like that.
When's the Army game?
December, second Saturday in December.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Beard's getting longer. All right. So under Selectmen's update, before we go into anything individual, I know Leah brought up, you kind of, it's probably a good idea, maybe Bill and I discussed it. Bill came up with sort of like a temper, a draft budget process, timing.
Sure.
For us.
Yeah, I looked back and our summit was on October seventeenth last year and we talked about carrying that forward. And I just, I want to make sure that we don't get off track and.
So we have the, I actually have a calendar that's already worked out and I was actually going to meet with the school administration this week. Actually, meeting on Thursday to try and finalize that and then have our preliminary review of that. We will have, have it to you for your next meeting. And then we do have a meeting planned for early November. Now, the reason why we're holding off is because we still don't have a state budget. And I think it's the reason I can't really give you any information that's, that's projectable until when that happens. So we, that's because that's a major piece of the budget equation. So we can, we're planning to, I'm meeting with the AdCon for the first time tomorrow night, but they're just meeting, it's sort of like their initial meeting, just to kind of, you know, kick them off for the year. But they're not even looking to get together until probably sometime again back in November. So we'll, we will certainly, we're in the planning stages of that, but we just haven't, we've had a delay a little bit, could we just have enough information for?
Yeah, so I don't know if anyone had a chance to see the school committee meeting or read the article, but on the last meeting, a big portion of that meeting was about budget. So Bill Yukina went over, here's everything that we're facing here. We've had to add point two nurses here, the, you know, there's an extra bus run for the elementary every day. You know, there's one point seven million dollars of costs that have been funded through grants. Those grants expire twelve thirty-one. So, you know, what happens after twelve thirty-one? There is another estimated eight hundred thousand dollars, you know, that if grants don't come, what happens? I know, you know, none of us know what's going to happen, but the update they did on the school side, even, you know, hearing it's costing sixty-five hundred dollars a week to clean or, you know, all that stuff. I have to imagine that there's costs at the library, there's costs at the Council of Aging, there's costs at police, there's costs, you know, highway.
Not nearly as much. And the reason why, so a lot of those costs were COVID, under, under COVID, under the COVID, on the CARES Act funding. And they're more like, more supply side as opposed to work side because we, and the challenges on the school side are clearly far more significant than they are anyone else. And they're more ongoing as well. So we have to take that into consideration. Bill is working to try and figure that out as well. We're offering him, you know, we can certainly available to help him any way we can. But that's why we're having a conversation this week, because I want to know where they stand and where things are going. Our revenue projections look pretty much exactly what we, what we thought they would be when we planned the budget for this year. So there's no, no real surprises on that side. We've seen some, we were a little concerned, we didn't see any money come in on the meals tax side, but then it turns out that that was a glitch on the state side. They've since come back to us and said we are getting some money. They've since come back to us and said we are getting some money, pretty much what we thought would come in. So we, there's no real surprises that we're seeing at this point in time. So, but we'll, we'll get into that in much greater detail at the next, the next few meetings. Once I have a meeting with them, I'll understand, have a better understanding of where they stand.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, we hear that kind of broad level update, but hearing that detail on the school side, it, it made me feel comfortable that we had, that we, they understood what was going on. It would be interesting for me to hear, how are we doing, you know, as kind of like a pulse check? Are, are we under, are we over, are we?
Well, I think in, oops, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's coming up.
Yeah, our next meeting has the finance team coming up.
Yeah, that's right.
So George is going to be.
Yeah, so that's, we, we were planning to.
So our next director's.
Okay.
Meeting is, is finance.
And he'll be able to cover all those, those departments?
That's exactly what we were going to planning, we're planning to do, was to give you that update at that point.
Okay. Yeah, that's why I brought it up, just, it sounds like you guys have a plan, but just, you know, understanding.
Well, it's hard, because we keep getting stonewalled with not knowing what the state, the feds are doing.
Right.
And the state doesn't know what they're doing until the feds, and we're not going to know anything until afternoon of the 3rd.
Right.
So, but we do have, I'm sure George is going to give us a great update on, on those little things like you.
Yeah.
Yeah, George and Marie have.
I mean, if he sees, you know, Bill's, just that type of update, for me, was really helpful to hear that. It, it wasn't everything in the weeds, but it was a high level. Here's some, you know, here's some really expensive things, or here's areas where we had to save, here's things that we have to keep our eye on as we go into after 12/31.
We'll make sure that George touches on that.
Right.
In two weeks.
Yeah, we've got, we've got, we've got it actually broken down, we're going to, we're going to actually have a presentation that we'll give on that date for that.
Yeah, I'd love to, I mean, bringing up the meals tax, it's, you know, it's every community, not just Massachusetts, across the country, but when you take a community like Foxborough that has a Patriot Place, or is, you know, has hotels that are not only used for business, but for use when there is a game, or a concert, or, you know, for, for lots of other things, it'll be interesting really to see where we come in with, with meals tax and, and taxes from the hotels that, the stuff that we, that, that we, you know, we rely on. Even, even though that stuff is going towards roads, I know it's not going towards general, general budget, but it's, you know, it's still going to be, it's still going to be a whack on, you know, I mean, if we have roads that need to be done, the money will have to come from somewhere, and if it's not coming from meals tax.
Well, we still get, we still get about $700,000 a year in, in, in state money.
Yeah.
For that, every year.
Well, that's what I mean, like, as Doc said, it'll be interesting to see what the state and the feds end up doing, because this is, I mean, I, you know, there's just only so much money, and it's, it's, this hurt is across every community in Massachusetts, and, you know, across, you know, it's not just, you know, you know, a community or a state that's been hit with a hurricane, or California with fires. This is across the board, and so it'll be interesting to see what, what they come up with.
And are they continuing to televise AdCom? That was the impression I got for tomorrow night.
Yes.
Confirming, yes. Okay, so that's tomorrow night. It will be televised, so we can tune in safely from home. But, yeah, like, no, like, like you said, Doc, no one knows what's going to happen, no one knows what's to come, but it's just, it's good to see the finger on the pulse to know where we are, and what are the what-ifs, and what are the worst-case scenarios, and what are the best-case scenarios, just so that there's no surprises, because there, well, you know what? There's going to be surprises.
Yeah.
But to understand.
And we, and we, there are going to be surprises, and we're hoping that the surprise will be to the good sides of those downs, because we, we took a very conservative approach coming into this. So I think, and we've had a couple good surprises to, you know, that are going to help us, I think, but it really depends upon how fast we can get to a situation where we can see a vaccination come, come into play, and that will start to help temper the situation a little bit. It's not going to be the, the only answer, because we know there will be a number of people that won't want to take it, but it certainly will help, and I think that's what we're all hoping for at this point.
All right. Any other Selectmen's update?
Just a request, can you have Christina upload the Board of Selectmen meeting dates for the rest of this year? They're not updated.
Okay.
Because I know we changed a couple around the holidays, so.
Yeah, they're coming up that are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I had just a little comment, not getting into any, any major detail or for people's privacy reasons, but, I mean, some of us know, some of us may not know. You know, our community, you know, had a, something tragic happen this past week, and it's, it just made me reflect a little bit, just that things are crazy right now between the COVID, between the presidential race, I mean, you know, people are divided, and there's, you know, and the, from being cooped up and not living their life how they normally do, there's a lot of stress in people's lives, but I just wanted to just kind of throw out there that, just remember, tomorrow is promised to nobody, life is short, try to be respectful, try to be considerate, try to be, don't want to sound like Ellen Ger- Ger- generous, but you know, try to remember to be kind, kind to people. It's just, you know, it, you know, like I said, I'm not going to get into any major detail, but what happened to our community this past week affected a lot of people, you know, from classmates to friends and circles of friends, and, you know, it just makes you be grateful for what is good, and, and it's a, it's an awful time right now with the COVID and everything, but just, you know, we'll get through it, and, like I said, I just, little public service announcement, just to remind everybody to, we'll get through it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We got one action item. This is probably just dotting our i's and crossing our t's on this one.
Okay, motion to approve Michael Estee as a constable for the town of Foxborough with a term to end 10/13/2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll make that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everybody. Happy Halloween.